Coming tonight, I call to order the Bethany City Council meeting for Tuesday, August 15th, 2017. Would you please rise for our prayer and our flag salute? Heavenly Father, I thank you this evening that you've gathered us all here and ask that you would give us wisdom and insight. Father, I ask that your Spirit would be in this room and that you would have your way, and we thank you. In Jesus' name, amen. Vice Mayor, now.
Please welcome to tonight, Mr. James Shea. Mr. Shea served in the Navy for six years as a CB, including sometime in Vietnam. CBs, if you did not know, can complete construction projects from roads, bridges, all kinds of buildings, runways, hospitals, barracks, hangars. Mr. Shea grew up in Tuttle, Oklahoma. After serving in the Navy, he completed an associate's degree in drafting and a bachelor's degree in engineering technology, both at Oklahoma State. His son and his wife live in Mustang, along with his grandson and his granddaughter, and his daughter and her husband live in Idaho, where they live with their four grandsons. Please welcome Mr. Shea to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Thank you for your service, sir. Item one denies the consent docket. Items A through K. Do I have a discussion or a motion?
I move approval of the consent docket.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Item two is appointment of substitute Judge Terrell Monks. Do I have a discussion or motion?
I'll make a motion to accept.
I second.
Please cast your votes. We are going to go ahead and swear you in, if that's okay.
Do I need to be on this, or am I loud enough?
I think you're loud.
Okay. I'll just give you a little introduction. Mr. Monks actually has worked for the city of Bethany much longer, probably twice as long as I have. I was correct, he mentored under David Davis. David confirmed today that you started as an intern and then worked as a city prosecutor for 21 years, or combination between interning and... Not often, but there's occasions that we have... I have a conflict of interest as far as being able to hear a case, and in the past, we've called in judges from other jurisdictions who come in and cover that. We just thought it would be a great idea to have Terrell be on... Take the oath of office in Bethany, so that if that occasion arises, he's by far the most knowledgeable about how our system works. My court staff is very confident in him, even though they've gone to a computer, but I think it just is a good fit for the city to have him come on and that he's at our call if we need his help. So what they asked me to do tonight is just administer the oath to him, so that after tonight, it's official, and have your phone ready. Okay, so if you'll raise your right hand. So I'm going to administer the oath of office for him to become a substitute judge for the municipality of Bethany. I state your name.
I, Terrell Monks.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And that I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the office of the judge...
The duties of the office of the judge.
Of the municipal court...
Of the municipal court.
Of the city of Bethany...
Of the city of Bethany.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If I might, have just 30 seconds.
Sure.
David Davis showed inordinate courage when he hired me in the middle of law school. I'm sure he had lots of great applicants, but I appreciated him and his then-court clerk, Mary Jones, whom we all loved dearly, showing confidence in me and hiring me on and then keeping me, even when I told defendants that they had drug problems and needed to seek help, and they didn't like hearing that. So I... He had to run the gauntlet for me to... With the city manager a time or two, and I appreciated that. But I've... Over the years, I've gotten a little wiser. I recognize that just because something is true, doesn't mean I need to say it out loud to defendants in court, and I appreciate you accepting me here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you introduce your wife and little girl?
Yes. This is my wife, Valerie. We've been married 13 years now, and this is my daughter, Anastasia. She's six and a half.
Beautiful. Thank you. Item three is the approval of resolution number 1458, approving agreement with IBTS for city code rewrite. Do I have a discussion or any comments?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of comments. I wanted to reiterate and get some assurance that in the process of rewriting Title 15, that IBTS could address the specific requirements for Ward II, or our roadways, our right-of-ways, and the specific sections in Title 15. Specifically, we have several roads that need to be repaved, and according to the current ordinances, the right-of-way width may not be appropriate under the circumstances, and I think that's an item that should be included as a part of the rewrite that should be or will be prepared by IBTS once they're approved. The second item that I would like to address and make sure that it's included within the responsibilities of IBTS is something related to the street types that are not provided in the current comp plan 2030. I would request and ask that IBTS include that as a part of their code rewrite, specifically for Ward II. My neighborhood has narrow streets and, you know, nothing has been done to improve that. I think we're on our way. We've had a busy weekend and last week related to one-ways in our neighborhood, but the 2030 plan is silent on street types, and I think there's some changes that need to be made, and I would hope that that could be included, and I want to make note of that now for the record, so that before we approve this agreement to hire IBTS, that that's... You're aware of that and should be addressed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And when you're talking about street types, are you thinking lanes, avenues, boulevards, that sort of street type?
What I'm talking about are classifications related to feeder roadways, classifications related to residential roadways. That needs to be changed in order to allow upgrades, and we currently... The ordinances now should be revised to address those issues in our neighborhood. We have a unique neighborhood related to the size of our roadways. We have a alley that is formerly an alley that is now a street, so those need to be addressed specifically, so that we can have a plan and ordinances that will allow us to update those roadways.
JD, do you have a report?
Yes, if I could maybe provide a little staff report. Thank you very much. It seems like we've been quite a bit of time getting to this point tonight, so it's pleasing that we are to the point of consideration now of a actual code rewrite. Our comp plan 2030 calls multiple times, excuse me, for the development of mixed-use districts in our community, and it was back in, I believe it was March of this year, that we began our process of going out for RFQs for a firm to be able to provide this service for us, and it was back in July, on July the 12th, that we had a joint meeting of the city council. Most folks here tonight were able to attend that meeting. Also, the Board of Adjustment, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and our Comp Plan Steering Committee were able to attend that meeting, where we heard a firsthand presentation by IBTS on the services that they provide. They... We do have the funds in the budget for this year for this service. It was planned, again, it was in the comp plan, and then we went into the budget process, knowing that this was contemplated, and council did approve a budget that included the funds to be able to fund this rewrite. This is crucial. Our rewrite has to happen if we want... If we wish, for the different types of mixed-use that are... We have already talked about long before, actually, I arrived in the community, if we wish those things to come to pass. We have to do a rewrite, and it's not a simple rewrite, and that's why we need assistance to do that. We did have, at that meeting, a number of folks who were in attendance from IBTS. I'll introduce them in just a moment. We're talking about two different tasks. There'll be a Task One and a Task Two. The first task will be a six-to-nine-month process, and then the final task, which will be the actual rewrite itself, will be another three to six months. There's a number of meetings, and I'll let them tell you about what it is that they will be doing as a part of that. So I think with that, I think I'd like to turn it over to Don Howell, let him introduce his team tonight. Excuse me, Don's not able to be here, so Doug Moore is... And Doug is actually going to be the lead on our project, anyway.
That's correct. I've got Mike Maynard with me here tonight, also with coming, and Matt Narsted. In addition to that, another person that you may see here will be Mark Seibold. He's also a planner that works with us on projects, and we may involve him in the project as well. So yes, in regards to some of the items that were brought up, as we are going through the rewrite, obviously, we'll have meetings with the council, with staff, with the stakeholders group, and we will flush out all of those issues and find out what they are, and then address them as they need to be addressed. In that case, that would fall underneath the subdivision regulations on that. So that's something that... That would be our process for dealing with those issues. I'm sure there are a number of other issues, other than what we've just heard here tonight. Like I said, we will need to sit down and flush all of those out and make sure that they're being addressed alongside of the comp plan update, to make sure that we're catching all of those with that. You know, Mayor, I don't really want to bore everybody with the details of our company, you know, 501(c)(3), you know, we were basically formed by government organizations to provide assistance, and that's what we do with that. So we're here in Oklahoma. Mike is our Oklahoma Branch Manager. In addition to that, Matt and I are with the Community Development Division of the Local Government Solution Division of the company. In addition to that, we have a Sustainability Energy side. We've got a Resilience side. We've got, you know, we've got about 10 other departments within the company, but we're the ones that will be working on this specific project for you. You know, I... Just real quick with that, I think it's probably better if I respond to any questions that you may have.
Anybody have any questions?
I have a question. Yes, sir.
Sure.
Have you done a rewrite of a code like this before?
Sir, I've been in the planning industry... Sir, our company is new to Oklahoma. Our board found a need, and actually, the Community Development Division of Local Government Solutions is only a year old. So we have been working with the city of Guyman. We've completed their comprehensive plan, but as an organization ourself, we have not written a code update here in Oklahoma. Now, I've got over 20 years' experience. Mike's got over 20 years' experience. Mark Seibold has over 10 years' experience, all writing codes. In addition to that, we've got folks out of our Kansas City office and our Louisiana office. If we need assistance from them, we'll bring them in, and we've got David Klapsaddle up in Guyman that he's got about 12 years' experience with that. So, you know, you've got experience here. It's not necessarily something that our company has done. Understand, it's new, because this is how our company works. When our governing bodies, which are the governing bodies you're all members of, when they give us direction to start a new phase of the company, that's what we do, and that's... They said there was a huge need for planning services, and believe me, we've seen that throughout the state of Oklahoma. So...
We also believe there's a great need for planning services, and we would like to have somebody do this for us with experience in this field.
I... Sir, I think I've already explained that. I have over 20 years' experience working on rewriting codes and comprehensive plans. So, you know, I don't know how to answer that any better for you.
Maybe if I could kind of have a follow-up question?
Sure.
I think the clarity lies within, have you had experience with Title 15 code rewrites?
Well, and understand, what you call Title 15, people throughout the country call it something different.
Sure.
Yes, I have written and worked with communities where we have written development codes, which cover all of the items that you have listed within your Title 15.
So when I looked at your resume and your background, it looks to me like you have extensive experience in doing these rewrites. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you. That's... Yes, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, one question. Could you speak briefly about your affiliation with the Oklahoma Municipal League?
I'll do my best, from what I understand, and Don Howell couldn't be here tonight. Don would be better for that. We are in partnership with the Oklahoma Municipal League. We have a service agreement with the Oklahoma Municipal League that allows us to go out and provide services to their members. We also have a similar agreement with the Northern Oklahoma Development Authority, and also the Indian Nation Council of Governments in the Tulsa area. We also have similar agreements with... In the Kansas City area and also in the state of Kansas.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve Resolution 1458, approving the agreement with IBTS for a city code rewrite.
I second it.
Please cast your votes.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I look forward to working with you all.
Likewise.
Yes, so do I. And I, for one, would just like to say, the city of Bethany has had its finest, lots of our finest, working on the comp plan for a long time, and I think if we don't do something to address the issues that you guys are going to help us address, then it's just a bunch of talk and it means nothing. So, thank you. Right now, I would like to... Item four is next, but I would like to move to item six, if I could, just before item four, to just switch those around, if I may. Item six is the approval of appointment of April Collins as Deputy City Attorney and authorizing city manager to approve contract for services. And I have a question. There may be a discussion, or somebody can just answer this. My question is, I know that the city council hires the city manager, the judge, and our city attorney. Would this fit underneath our responsibility as a council, under our agreement with our city attorney?
Actually, actually, as the deputy city attorney, that would be a council appointment, and that's why that's on your agenda, and what this item would do is to appoint Ms. Collins as the deputy city attorney, and the city manager has some discussion about the compensation that's involved, but you're authorizing him to enter into a contract with her based on that compensation.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Well, and Mr. Mayor, as a follow-up on that, ultimately, the city council would make the determination as to the salary provided to Mrs.
That's correct. Mr. Cox has a recommendation, but it certainly would be a joy.
So we're not providing the city manager with authority to determine the salary, just to make a recommendation?
And to execute the written employment agreement with her.
Based upon approval by the city council.
That's correct.
Do we have any more discussion or motion?
Well, yes, Mr. Mayor, we need to change that language on item six to confirm how that's going to happen, as opposed to saying authorizing city manager to approve contract for services. Is there anything we could clarify that, Mr. Davis?
Certainly, you can do it in your motion. I think you could change "approve" to "execute." What this... How this will work, and I'll let Mr. Cox speak about the money, but Ms. Collins will have a retainer-type agreement with the city, similar to what I have, where she's paid a flat sum per month to attend meetings and to participate in the training process, and then she will also have an agreement similar to what I have for extraordinary matters, such as court matters, where she will be paid an hourly rate to do that. And you want to talk about the money, or you want me to? The money that was discussed by the city manager and agreed to by Ms. Collins was $2,000 per month as a retainer, and then the hourly rate of $150 per hour for extraordinary services. And I think all of you have seen the retainer agreement I have. The agreement Mr. Cox is going to sign is going to read virtually the same as that.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Is this contract like yours that provides a health insurance?
I don't have health insurance.
You don't have health insurance, or retirement?
Nor retirement. She... The only benefit she will have will be she'll be covered under the Governmental Tort Claims Act, which all of you are as well. She also will... The city will pay her social security, not because she wanted it to, but because the IRS requires that, and then she'd, of course, be covered on workers' compensation if she was injured on the job. So those are the benefits.
Thank you very much, sir.
Does anybody have any other questions or comments?
Your honor, I'd make... Or your honor, pardon me.
Just moved up.
That's a good habit to have, by the way.
That's right.
I would make a motion, Mr. Mayor, for approval of the appointment of April Collins as deputy city attorney, and require... Or require the city manager to obtain approval for her compensation prior to executing a contract for services. Is that clear enough, Mr. Davis?
You're not wanting to approve those amounts tonight?
Well, I guess my concern is, I didn't know anything about those amounts, and here I am today. So I don't have a problem with those amounts. I just was not informed. That's kind of a problem for me.
That would be fine. I would recommend that you go ahead and appoint her as deputy city attorney, subject to that being brought back to you at your next meeting. Primary reason being, I'd like for her to go into the executive session, which is an earlier item, and participate in that. So that's my motivation for asking if the item be moved forward.
I have a question, Mr. Davis. Could the council, since the amounts have been discussed already, could they go ahead and approve those amounts tonight?
If they're comfortable with it, they could.
We don't have to come back again.
I don't believe that was Mr. Palmer's suggestion, however.
You're going to make a change? You want to amend yours to those amounts?
I think the city attorney makes $3,000 of that.
I think we call that a pregnant pause in the business.
I would amend my motion to approve the appointment of April Collins as the deputy city attorney, based upon the contract for services proposed by the city manager.
I'll second that.
And I would suggest that we'll bring that contract to you, and if someone wants to place it on the agenda, discuss it further for amendment, that certainly would be appropriate later.
Thank you.
Sure.
Please cast your votes. Now, back to item four. Proposed executive session for discussion with city attorney. The defense to be raised in case of... How do you pronounce that?
Cleaver, I believe.
Cleaver versus city of Bethany pertaining to vacating an alley in the oilfield addition of Bethany, Oklahoma. This action is authorized under the Oklahoma Open Meeting Act, Section 307(b)(4), for confidential communication between a public body and its attorney concerning pending investigation, claim, or action. If the public body with the evidence of its attorney determines that disclosure will seriously impair the ability of the public body to process the claim or conduct a pending investigation, litigation, or proceeding in the public interest. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
Some moved.
I'll second it.
Please cast your votes.
If you would, bring your iPads with you, because I want to talk to you about some of the pictures.
We shall return.
And as deputy city attorney, and if you will, raise your right hand up and, after me, state your name.
I, April Collins.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, defend, and obey the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
That I will support...
Obey and defend.
Obey and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Oklahoma.
And that I will not knowingly...
That I will not knowingly...
Receive indirectly or directly...
Receive indirectly or directly.
Any money or other valuable thing...
Any money or other valuable thing.
For the performance...
For the performance.
Or non-performance...
Or non-performance.
Of any duty pertaining to your office.
Of any duty pertaining to my office.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
Other than the compensation allowed by law.
And you further swear...
And I further swear.
That I will faithfully discharge...
That I will faithfully discharge.
Your duties as deputy city attorney for the city of Bethany.
My duties as deputy city attorney for the city of Bethany.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Item five is proposed action directing city attorney to present appropriate defense for preservation of the easement and right-of-way rights of the city, and the easement sought to be vacated in an oilfield addition to Bethany. Do I have a motion?
Your honor, I said it again. Mr. Mayor...
Yes, sir.
I would make a motion that we object to vacate the easement and request the city council to zealously defend the pending action.
I'll second that.
I'll second that.
Please cast your votes. Skipping down to item seven. Is the call to the public. If there's anyone who wishes to address the council, please approach the microphone and state your name and address. You will have three minutes to speak. All questions and or comments must be directed to the mayor, and no citizen may address and or question any individual governing body member or staff member, except with permission of the mayor. Do I have anybody that would like to speak tonight?
My name is Glenn Groves. I live at 7,005 Northwest 45th. And I'm wanting, would like to know, really, why we are wanting to go and make Mueller and Asbury all one-way streets, all the way from 46th to 42nd, when it has two different hazards. We go through and residents get blocked in from their driveways. We go through and make it two lanes of traffic. The problem is, the kids are not going to be able to get across. People are not going to pay attention in the morning, they're going to be distracted. I've seen it too many times. And if there happened to be an emergency, how are the fire department, police department, ambulance, whoever, going to actually get down the street in order to take care of it?
You can keep talking.
Okay. And want to talk about the added traffic that's going to add from 45th, 44th, over on Central. That's entire, well, I mean, we already have a lot of traffic to begin with, and it's just going to add for more, to the point that kids aren't going to be able to go out and play, because there is talks of making it 24 hours a day, seven days a week, or permanently. That's not fair to the residents that live in that area. Like I said, I understand it's for the safety for the children. But why can't we make it during school hours? We can make it from 7:30 or 7 o'clock in the morning until 4:00 or 4:30 in the afternoon. That gives school plenty of time to get out, do whatever it is they need to do, and then the residents can come and go as they need to. I understand that there's a cost to make signs to go through and put that it's from this time to this time, but that shouldn't be that big of an issue. I just feel that. I just don't feel that it's fair to the other residents. And kind of wish that we didn't have to do it this way. It's been going like this for, I've lived there for the last 10 years. My wife has lived in the area for the last 20-plus years. Things seem to flow just fine. If it's not broke, don't fix it. That's my opinion.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yes, sir. Bill Barti, 4806 North.
Hold on, I'm sorry. I'm trying to figure out how to work this little timer thing, sorry. It's the first time I've actually had to do it, so I'm trying to figure it all out.
Say when.
Go.
Did you repeat your name, Honorable?
Bill Barti, and my wife's Candy. We live at 4806 North Asbury in Bethany. And you said in your Facebook page that you'd like for us to come and give our ideas on this, and, and I just feel like, as a longtime resident of Bethany, and I've lived there for 25 years, since August of 1991, I see it on a daily basis, the traffic situation. I'm back and forth on, from my house on Asbury up to 39th and past every day. And I'm all for the safety of the kids, obviously. That's, and I, I think that the current system we have, you have in place now, it works fine, where the, at 3 o'clock, the, the traffic guy comes and shuts traffic off. Everybody's good with going around during the, during the crunch times. And I understand the whole issue about out-of-district folks coming in. And that's really the main traffic jam periods when that occurs. Because, again, I experience it every day. At 7 o'clock, 7:30 in the morning until 8:00, until the kids get in school, and then boom, it's like a ghost town from 10, from then until about 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And then boom, it's packed again. And then, you know how it is when school's out? Boom, everybody wants to get the heck out of Dodge. And so they're, it's a ghost town again from then through the rest of the evening. So I'm all for the safety of the kids and for providing one-way streets during that time. I think that's a great idea. But just like others, other cities and other towns in, in surrounding areas have posted signs for the, those time periods, we can do the same thing. I just think that the whole idea of making it 24 hours a day, 365 a year, is frankly nonsense. I'm just going to go ahead and say it. I'm all for realistic, logical thinking, but ideas and change for the, just the change of, for the sake of change by itself isn't just plain nonsense. And so I think we're, hopefully, the engineering company you're mentioning, and it's going to be coming in here and giving their perspective, will verify what I just said. And I know you're going to weigh heavily on their decision, but I think my time's about up, so I'll just say that's, that's my perspective, and I wanted you to hear it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Moving on to item eight. City attorney's report.
All my items are on the agenda.
Item nine, city manager's report.
And before the city manager makes his, makes his report, I'd request the secretary, in future minutes, make a summary of the comments, which would be included in the minutes, so that that could be approved by council at the next meeting. Thank you.
We may need to follow up on that a little bit, if we want the entirety, the verbatim comments, or if we want a summary of comments made.
I think a summary of comments made would be beneficial and helpful for residents to be informed of upcoming issues that may be in the future.
Very good, and we can do so. Thank you. Thank you. I do have a few items this evening. The first is, there's a noticeable absence here in the room this evening. Our deputy city manager, Steve Harzman, is, has been in the hospital recently, and we wish he had some fairly serious things that occurred, but he's in a, in a great place. And I mean that as far as Oklahoma City is concerned. We have great healthcare here, and he is on the mend and was supposed to be headed home today, although I haven't spoken to him. So we keep him in our thoughts and prayers. I wanted to mention to you a few quick items. We have a flurry of activity going on at the city at, at this point. All of our new initiatives are in full swing, the cemetery, arts and culture, Parks, Tree, and Rec Board, the Bethany Economic Development Authority, the branding and logo, and the Charter Review Committee are out now, now, all having regular meetings, are all on top of it. I know that at one point, there was some discussion about having reports come back to you all, and I think that that will be appropriate in, in the not-too-distant future, especially for some of them. Some of them are relatively new, newly appointed. I do wish to make a pitch for our most recent approved initiative, and that is our recycling task force. We're still looking for folks, and we decided to go ahead and extend that just a little bit longer till the university and schools came back into session, so that perhaps there might be one or two folks from those population sources that might be able to add some things to the recycling efforts, or to us looking into recycling. I would also like to share with you all, we have a tremendous congratulations to Chief Phil Cole and their staff. We were recently notified of an award of $85,000 for our city police department's participation in a major seizure operation. And I, I just, I, Chief Cole is going to be looking at needs, this is, these will be, these dollars can go directly toward police operations, and it's outside of regular budgeted dollars. And so he's taking a hard look at those needs that the police department need the most. And again, congratulations to them on a great job, again. Congratulations to Susan Tate, recently appointed as our city clerk. We'll have it on the agenda, and we'll do the official swearing-in at our next council meeting. But it's a pleasure working with Susan. She has a, a wealth of experience here with the City of Bethany, and we look forward to her continuing to go down the road of assuming more and more responsibilities. Right now, we're kind of continuing the, kicking the can down the road, so to speak, for a little bit, until we kind of get everything in place for her to begin assuming more operations responsibilities. I wanted to share with you that on August 26th, there's, I, I'm just very pleased we continue to have more and more outdoor activities in our community. Ukes on the Street is, just came across my desk just a day or two ago. This is ukuleles. I, was anyone playing the report on that? No, it was still in the thunder. But there, it's going to be a music art and auto show on August the 26th from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. We'll be closing down College Avenue from 38th to 39th Street for that event. And if you have a ukulele, bring it to that event. I wanted to report to you all as well, another initiative that we talked a little bit earlier about the comp plan. One of the, one of the big areas of the comp plan that it talks about is connect, connectability in our community, connecting people and places in our community, and, and our lack of sidewalks in, in Bethany. And, and it contemplates having more sidewalks. And so you've probably noticed that city crews have been beginning to construct some sidewalks in the, in some key areas. But what we're working on now, that we anticipate bringing to an upcoming council meeting, it will first need to go to planning and zoning for consideration, but will be a sidewalk incentiv, incentivized, incentivization program that will, one, make it easier for people to build sidewalks in Bethany, and, two, will incentivize their construction of sidewalks in Bethany. And so I anticipate that coming back on the September 16th council meeting. The final thing, as my, I usually do, give you an update on code enforcement. We're now up to 862 notices of violations issued, spread throughout the four wards of our community. Of those, only 102 remain open. That means 760 have now been closed to date, and only five are headed toward abatement at this point. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Fantastic. Thank you. Item 10 is the council members' announcements, comments, and proposals, and I would like to just go a little bit out of order tonight, if I can, by leading off. In regards to the one-ways, I will let you know that I am the biggest advocate, obviously, we all are, for our children's safety. But I'll just let you know that I will be the biggest cheerleader and advocate for the one-ways being during school only. But we do need to let the, the traffic study take its course, and whatever they say, then that's what we'll do. I, I am, I met with Nico Gomez the other day, and I think of him living right in the middle of Mueller, and in the middle of summer, having to deal with the one-ways seems a little crazy, but personally. But we'll let the traffic study do its thing and, and see what the data comes back as, and we will adhere to that. So I appreciate your comments and everything. We really are in a really good place in our city, and there are a lot of people excited. I'm excited to get to play a small part of it and be a part of this team that we have here. And I believe we got the greatest people on the planet that live in this community, our city. There are 20,000 people, only 20,000 people on planet Earth that get to call Bethany home, and that is a very special thing to me. So I'm excited about being a part of it. We will start over here at, your honor, Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to also comment about the one-way issue in War II. And I want to remind the residents of War II that four years ago, you never had an opportunity to get on Facebook and provide your opinion and insight as to issues that are going on in the neighborhood. And communication is key to the success of this city. And communication and debate and discussion is a vital component to not only figure out what we need to do, but then figure out how we need to do it. And I think that the issue related to the one-ways is a great example of how the community can make a decision and come to a resolution. Does that mean everybody's going to be happy? I don't know. But it does allow everyone to participate. And that is your privilege, and that is your right. And you need to understand that, and you need to respect it. And you also need to respect your neighbors and their opinions. I think that's very important, as we not only take on this issue, but as we approach other issues that come up within the community. We are residents of Bethany, the best city in the state of Oklahoma, and we need to live up to that, and we need to act like that, and we need to take pride in how we operate and what we say and how we treat other people. And I say all that in the context of the one-way, and I want to inform the residents that this is a situation that we are going to work through, and there are other things that will come about because of this. Not only do we have an increased police presence in our neighborhood, which we've been asking for, and now we will get, we also have issues related to the maintenance of roadways in our neighborhood that will be considered and will be included in the traffic study. We also have issues related to parking on side streets that were not addressed, that will be addressed in the traffic study. And we will have a document that will be of record with the city related to the issues in War II. So although there will be some inconvenience, and although there will be some debate between the residents, which is healthy, we will come to some solution. And that is something that we should look forward to. And that is something that we should work towards in order to make our neighborhood what we want it to be. And with that, I give my time to the mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Harris?
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming out for the groundbreaking, AKA mud scooping, the other day. I said there would be 150 people there, and we knew there were because we counted the umbrellas. Wasn't it beautiful with all the sea of umbrellas? But the kids came, and it was just fun. So we appreciate everyone who did show up, and you can watch it on the webcam. There will be a day soon when construction starts, or destruction starts first, as the demolition of the old building and it is, comes down. But you can watch it on the webcam through the city website or the Metropolitan Library System website. So I find that I just keep checking to see what's going on, and it's still standing there. So that will be happening soon, and I'm excited. still standing there. So, that will be happening soon, and I'm excited. Meanwhile, we're working on the plans for the playground, and also for the public art. So, it's a project in the making.
Thank you. Mr. Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two items. Regarding your groundbreaking thing, I think that was baptized by God with all the rain. So, it must be ordained, but certainly blessed, okay. Speaking about the rain, we had a little shower this afternoon, and we are once again reminded that there's certain areas of our city that need attention as far as the water runoff. And I'm not sure where in this comp 2030 plan or the rewrite, but we need to factor this into the equation. We've got some serious issues that need to be addressed with our groundwater runoff. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herron?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I have nothing tonight.
Mr. McCutcheon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have nothing.
Mr. Shirey?
Yes, let me get my speaker turned on here, so everybody can hear me. I think the mayor made a very appropriate statement about what we're going to have to do around the school. It is in a growing situation, and we all know what that growing situation is. It's traffic. And that school has made stellar improvements in the last 25 years, but the streets haven't made any improvement. And you, I can understand why people that live there can, can see that, you know, if there's nobody walking around out there, why do we not have to observe the one-way streets? But people sometimes forget that they're one-way streets, and they drive down them and cause serious troubles. And I think we're going to have to listen to our traffic people and see what they come up with. And I think that the people that live in the area should also be brought into this traffic study, so that their needs are addressed also. And if we, if we don't do that, we will not have cohesion in that area of Bethany. I know we have other areas that I live in that the streets are so narrow, and there are so many cars parked on them, that it may be very difficult to fight a fire because of getting our large vehicles up and down. But I don't think we can address that in the whole city of Bethany, but this is only a small portion. And it's, it is, it has occurred because of the growth of the enrollment of the school, which is a real standard mark for the city of Bethany. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Mr. Nat?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended the library groundbreaking, like most of us here did. And I've told several people that I was camping with Boy Scouts for 10 months straight with a burn ban. I'll take all the water we can get. It helps our reservoirs, it helps everything. So, a little bit of rain doesn't hurt you, you'll dry. I'd like to offer prayers for Mr. Harsman, that he has a really good recovery from his situation. Also, just encourage everybody to take a little extra caution with schools starting in our neighborhoods, and really all around the metro area and across the state, anywhere you go. Just take a little extra caution, watch for kids in the streets, watch your speeds, so on and so forth. And lastly, speaking of schools, I'd encourage anybody that could afford a ream of paper, or a box of tissues, or even a case of those, to take them by your local school, because they can really use them. My wife, being a teacher in a different district, I see that every day. Kids come to school with nothing. They're not prepared for school, and that doesn't just happen at the beginning of school, but it happens year-round. So, anything that, if you can afford to take a ream of paper to a school, they'd really appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, and let me add to my earlier comment, if I may, real quickly, that this traffic study will look at, and I know, I don't remember if you had mentioned it or not, Mr. Palmer, but will look at other streets that surround the area that will be affected, and we know, you know, we need to look at that as well. So, there are things with parking and other streets that this engineering firm will be looking Item 11 is new business. Does anybody have any new business they would like to bring? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until September 5th. With that, I call to order the Bethany Public Works Authority. Item 1 is the consent docket A and B. Do I have a discussion or a motion?
Make a motion to approve the consent docket.
Second?
Please cast your votes. Item 2 is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until September 5th. With that, I call to order the Bethany Hospital Trust. Item 1 is the consent docket A and B. Do I have a discussion or a motion?
Make motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Please cast your votes.
I would, I would like to discuss on this hospital trust, this one chiller that they're wanting to replace.
That's item three. We haven't gotten to that yet.
Item three, yes. Could, could we leave that out right now, and this, and bring it back in the next meeting?
Do we want to second this and get a vote on item 1? Do we have a second? Please cast your votes for item 1. Item 2, approval of resolution 1437, confirming and approving the tenant improvements for the Bethany Hospital facility by UHS Oklahoma City LLC, and authorizing the finance director to prepare an amortization schedule reflecting the rent credit as provided for in the lease agreement. Do I have a discussion or a motion?
I have several questions, Ms. Mayor. Go ahead.
May I give a report?
Yes, please.
That's okay, Mr. Todd? Is that, is that okay, sir? Okay. We, we are bringing this back to you this evening. This was on the agenda a few meetings ago, quite a few meetings ago. Wanted to just walk through several things regarding this. This particular item, for whatever reason, when it was entered into a few years back, a lot of the i's were not dotted and t's crossed. So, there were quite a few, quite a bit of work that had to occur in order to do that. As we have listed on the first page of the narrative, Schedule 1.3, 2.2A, 2.2B, 2.5, and 2.7, all were left blank, and those have now all been completed and accomplished. And I thought maybe I might take just a moment and just kind of hit a highlight regarding this agreement. The initial lease of the agreement is for 10 years. It was entered into in 2014, and rents for $18,000 a month. There was a provision in the initial contract that would allow up to $2 million worth of credits over a period of time. I'll get to those in just, just a moment. And so, with that credit, each month would, then, the idea was that the rent would be waived, the $18,000 per month would be waived until that point was reached. The rent would actually increase in 2024 to $20,000 per month, per the CPI. We, so with that, we've also received, in addition to that $2 million, we've received approximately, I'm going to round the number, $1.7 million in additional restoration claims. The city is responsible for 50% of those. So, when we approve those claims, we're actually approving half of those. If you wouldn't mind in your packs, jumping to the last page, that is the amortization schedule, and it's real easy to see what is actually happening with this project. We, with this, you can see on the top line, the $2 million, and how that decreases over a period of time. You'll see, and so that's in the 1, 2, 3, 4, the fifth column over shows $2 million. Do everyone see that? And then the following column after that shows $1.6 million, which is the number I read just a moment ago, which is the additional enhancements that have been made over time. So, our responsibility is $838,000 rounding of that. So, you add the $2 million plus $838 million, and that rounds up to $2.838 million. It's going to be amortized, amortized over a period of time. And you can see then, as you look down over a period of years, how that number on the far right-hand corner, far right-hand side, will actually decrease as those $18,000 per month waived rental fees continue to decrease that number. And then it jumps up, as you can see down below, in 2024 to $20,000 per month, and it decreases even on a quicker pace. I wanted to just make one other comment. It, it is great to have a tenant such as that we have. I understand that we do have some folks from UHS that are here this evening, and we might invite them to come and share a few words that they might have for you. But they're great tenants, and they do, they have a great mission, and they do a great job. I've had the personal opportunity of being able to tour the facility, and like I said, they, they do great work there. I might mention one other thing, and that is that this additional money that I talked about just a moment ago, the $1.6, $1.7 million of additional things that have been done to the facility, our CFO, JR Robinson, has gone through a vetting process of those numbers, and has, has gone through and made sure that all those things are legitimate, and he could probably answer some questions on that. But if you all don't mind, let, let us invite up our friends from UHS to come visit about where they are.
Yes, please.
And if you wouldn't mind introducing yourself.
Hi, I'm Nicole Cook. I'm the CFO for Bethany Behavioral. We are also Cedar Ridge is our main campus. So, Bethany is a part of Cedar Ridge. I came on board in 2014 specifically for the Bethany project to see it through. I was the first employee. So, I, I came on board after the decision was made. So, there are a lot of pieces that were fuzzy to me that we had to kind of go back and dig up ourselves. But I thoroughly enjoy being here, so. And I can answer any questions, if you have any questions.
Do you have another gentleman here?
Daniel Leonard. I'm the Director of Plant Operations for the facility in Cedar Ridge. I was here a couple of previous meetings ago when we first discussed this item.
Would you mind briefly telling us, employees, how many beds you have, how many patients you have, average, Lee?
Sure. We have 56 licensed beds out of our Bethany campus. Last month was our highest average daily census that we've, that we've ever hit, and we ran close to 43, 44, which, for the state in total, is pretty amazing. So, we had a pretty great month. Employees, is that the other question? We have approximately, I want to say 60 FTEs, so that's encompassing all hours worked, whether it be part-time, full-time, or as-needed staff.
Could you, could you briefly describe your future plans for the building, and what your five- and 10-year, 15-year plan is related to the facility?
Absolutely. So, so right now, our, our big focus, our big push is the Jero population. We've seen a need, and we've seen that fulfilled in our census. Currently, our future plans is to kind of branch off into PHP and IOP for more outpatient treatment, to mitigate the, the reedmits, and provide more help in the future.
And that would be done at this facility over a period of time?
Mm-hmm. We've actually, we began the PHP program three months ago, so it's, it's just getting ramped up, but we would like to extend that possibly. I mean, if we have to rent another space on 23rd, we've even been open to that.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm not a, in the medical profession.
You're good.
Can you explain those acronyms just for a quick second?
So, so PHP is basically a next level of care after you're an inpatient acute. It's a, it's a good step down. It is a partial hospitalization, is what it stands for. And you don't have to stay at the facility. So, it's five days a week. You come in for a full-day treatment, and then you kind of can step down into the IOP, which is intensive outpatient therapy. And it's two to three times a week, half-day, full-day, however you want to do it. But it's that continuing level of care, you know, 30 days, 60 days, on past the initial inpatient experience.
We appreciate your participation in the city of Bethany and the use of the facility, and we don't take that for granted, and we look forward to a good relationship.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
How, how are you funded on, on the beds per day that you operate? Are you county, state?
We are corporate.
Corporate.
Mm-hmm. Universal Health Services in Pennsylvania actually owns us. So.
The question was, how, how's the, how's the bill? In other words, if a patient's in your hospital, how's that bill? It's not by corporate, it's by state?
It's for the, for insurance provider they come in with. So, if they come in with Medicare, then we would bill Medicare. Because we should, or... Is that, does that answer?
Yes, ma'am. Is there any other questions? Thank you. I would like to take this time publicly to ask you two. I don't know if you've heard of our 23rd Street District Vision, but you are on 23rd Street, so we would invite you to be a part of this vision team of what is going to transpire in Bethany down 23rd Street. Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have several questions here. Do I get them all at one time, or just one at a time here? The, looking at the packet here, there's a, quite an extensive list of improvements that have been made, and the billing as a result thereof. In my mind, raises the question of who made up the list, and then who approved the list for the repairs? The next part of it, was there any permits taken out for any of these repairs? And then, has our city inspectors inspected to see that these repairs were made according to code? So, it's a pretty extensive list, and I'm, I'd just like to know what the protocol is.
Well, the, the protocol should be that you all, just like we're going to do here in just a moment with the following resolution, where you can take up and approve the purchase of new things. Unfortunately, what we, what we're doing now, kind of similar to some other issues, like we were talking about, some areas of Bethany where unfortunately things were not done correctly in the past, and we're picking up the pieces today and doing the best we can with that. So, unfortunately, a lot of these things were purchased without city council approval in the past, or the city approving them. And so, what we're, that's what I was talking about at the very beginning, my comments, that we're going back, and we're having to recreate these, these documents that were left blank at the time. And so, these, these infrastructure upgrades were made, and the best we could do is go back and ensure that they were made. And that's part of what today is about, is, is saying, okay, we gotta, we have to draw a line in the sand and say, okay, this is the point where we are today. That's why JR's done such a heavy job of going in and ensuring that all those things were completed correctly. were completed correctly. And so, so your second part is permits and inspections. Anything we know of today, we'll be doing permitting and inspecting. I can't say what's incurred in the past.
I might just supplement that. This wasn't a secret project or anything. When they leased this building, we knew that it had mold, we knew that that was going to have to be remediated. The roof was leaking, the air handlers weren't working, the elevators were out. The city manager and some of the other staff toured the facility with the UHS people, and it was depicted what they were going to do, and UHS hired various contractors. I think, I can't remember the name of the big contractor, but there's one main contractor that did most of the remodel work, and, you know, it's not that the city wasn't aware of what was going on. It was being inspected as it went in, so. Maybe that helps. It is difficult to go back after the fact and justify every leak item on that list, but, but they were installed, and I've toured the building, and I would say that it appears to me they spent all that money there because it was an extensive job.
So, who, do we know who made up the list of the repairs required and who approved said list?
Well, the, the list was prepared after the fact from the invoices that were submitted to Mr. Robinson to review, and it was, a determination was made that all those things were put into the hospital. I mean, no one actually approved the purchase of, you know, a particular item. There was a contractor hired to do most of the construction kind of work.
Have our city inspectors gone through and inspected, you know, and signed off on the remodeling or permits or, or with city inspectors?
I will check on that.
Thank you.
Could you explain, you know, they, they're, they're going to pay a lesser, or a greater amount back or a lesser amount back than what we've really spent on the project? Is this not correct?
I can explain that. The, the original contract authorized them to spend $2 million, which was the original estimate for the reconstruction. And that was, they were entitled to a rent credit for that $2 million. Well, after they got into it and discovered additional mold and things of that nature and some other inoperable items, they came back with an additional proposal that was the additional, was it $1.6 million, is that the number? And the contract provides that if the amount exceeded that original $2 million, that we would only give them credit for half that. They paid it all upfront, but they're getting half of it back as a rent credit.
Half of the, half of the $1.6 million back as a credit, but all of the $2 million back as a credit.
That's correct.
So, they're getting about a $2,837,000 back as, as a credit against the rent.
Yes. I might also add that.
Now, one other question is, is how are we going to handle the maintenance on that building after we sign this contract?
They are responsible for the routine maintenance for integral improvements, which are things such as a roof, a chiller, various major, what I would call capital improvement type items, capital items. The agreement provides that if some of those items come about, that the city and the UHS will negotiate on the payment of those items. If we can't reach an agreement, they have the right to terminate the agreement, or the city can agree to pay for half of it, which is the next item on the agenda for the chiller. In other words, after, after the remodel was done, this chiller recently went out, I'm told, and they're asking the city to contribute half of the cost of the replacement, which is provided for in the lease. It's not just something.
Was it, was it provided for in the original lease? How come we weren't cognizant of this up until this time? I mean, I've read, I've read the business about the half of, above the $2 million.
What, what, could you repeat the question, please? Were we not cognizant of?
Why, are we, you know, this chiller you say went bad just recently? And we, we are in negotiation with them, or they are, or are they telling us now that they will pay 50% of that?
They are, yes.
And we'll get to that item in just a moment.
That's what, that's what I was wanting to.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And, and so I might point out one more thing, though. So, the, the very last item, we looked at it a moment ago, the amortization schedule. So, that will, if you approve the next item in just a moment, that will change just slightly.
That, that's, that will change, that will make it longer.
Barely, three months. Yes, sir.
Essentially, they have improved our hospital.
I, I was just going to add to what I said earlier, that is that after Deaconess left the hospital and vacated their lease, the hospital sat vacant for months. The roof was leaking, the ceilings were falling in, mold was accumulating, there were plumbing problems associated with no water going through the drains, and, and there were break-ins, vandalism issues, and we struggled very hard to find someone to lease the property. And we did make contact with UHS, and they were the only prospect, and at the time, we knew that it was going to take considerable funds to bring it up to speed, and the city didn't have the funds to do it, plus there wouldn't be any reason for the city to do without a tenant, because it would just still be vacant. So, that's a little bit of an explanation of why all this happened.
If the city defects on the lease on our end, are we responsible for paying back the entire additional $1.6 million? Because if we defect, we're responsible for paying back at least the $2 million, correct?
No. If, if we default on the lease?
Yes.
I don't believe it really speaks to that, but I would say we probably would be. If they walked away, even at the end of the first term, we get to keep all the improvements, and we don't owe them any money. But if we were to evict them from the lease for one reason or another, yes, I think we'd owe them money back.
Including the full $1.6, not the 50%, the entire portion, we would have to pay back if, if they decide they don't want a lease and honestly, they have good lawyers and figure out how to pin it on us.
Yeah, of course, the lease does provide, if they don't renew at the end of the term, that we keep all the improvements at no cost to us.
So, do I have a motion to approve Resolution Number 1437?
Just moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes. Item 3 is approval of Resolution Number 1459, approving the replacement of one carrier chiller for the Bethany Hospital facility. Do we have any reports or discussion?
I, I might just invite our, our guests back up and let them just share with you what, what happened with the chiller.
Any questions? Basically, the, the facility has two functioning, two chillers that are set up on the system. They work as in conjunction with each other. One of them has completely failed, and the other one has partially failed. We actually just repaired the partially failed one, and now we were wanting to replace the, the completely failed chiller, and that was the proposal that was sent, sent to you all.
The last time I was down there, there were three chillers sitting on the pads.
I don't know if, I only know of two pads for chillers. I know they're very large, so it may seem like there's, it looks like there may be three, and they sit in different directions, so. But when I came aboard February of last year, there was only been two.
The two that face north and south?
No, there's one that faces north and one faces, one faces north-south, the other one faces east-to-west.
That's a duplex chiller that you're wanting to replace?
Yeah, they were, they, it's one chiller that works off of two circuits.
Oh, it's a two-circuit chiller? Okay.
Correct. And that's where one of them, one of them failed completely, and the other one failed partially, and we repaired the one circuit that failed on one of them, and then the other one has completely failed.
Any other questions?
And that provides the cooling for the building, so.
So, one note here, everybody can, that has this can read it, that is about a 20-year-old chiller, I think. JR, was that your notation as far back as you could find? That's a long time.
Yeah, I know, I actually met with one of the Deaconess former maintenance personnel and actually, because I just wanted to get some history on it, and they, there was a lot of problems that they had with that particular one, so.
Is there anything else?
Just additional comment, too, we actually added them to a contractor preventative maintenance schedules, an additional to all the preventive maintenance that we do on it. We actually have a contractor that will come in on a monthly basis and do semi-annual checks and annual checks on them as well, that way extending the life of them.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve Resolution Number 1459.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Thank you. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until September 5th. With that, I call to order the Bethany Development Authority. Item 1 is consent docket A and B. Do I have a discussion or a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Please cast your votes. Item 2, do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until September 5th. Thank you for coming, everybody.